Oh, yeah.
I know.
Well, I'll start things off. I hope everybody noticed the colors of the leaves coming in today. Isn't that beautiful?
I thought the moon over top of the leaves.
Oh, you were up later than I was. I just really, it was so bright and brilliant. What a great day. Way to start a day.
You probably wouldn't have been able to see that, but I'm way down the hill into Wellsboro. Full moon is still out.
I was teasing. I saw it last night before the clouds. What they call the hunter's moon or something that... I wasn't hunting. I was just looking. Thirty seconds to lift off.
Twenty-eight.
Took me two seconds to tell you.
Competition already.
Nope. Game over.
Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning and thank you for being here this morning. And we would ask for a public comment on agenda items only. Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting, please.
There before me, signed by all those present, I would move them as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. Personal items, Casey, please.
Yes, I have some items for information for the board this morning. The following are resignations that we received from staff. Kelly Golightly, a part-time corrections officer at the jail, effective nine fourteen twenty-two. Sierra Boyce, dispatcher in emergency services, effective nine twenty-five twenty-two. Christopher Pratt, deputy sheriff, effective nine twenty-nine twenty-two. And Trish Tanner, children and youth, effective ten twenty-one twenty-two. We also have for information to appoint Carrie Anne Moser as chief deputy register recorder office. And the first item I have for approval is the appointment of Ryan Fish to the Tioga County prison morgue at sixty thousand, seven thousand dollars per year, retroactive to eight thirty-one twenty-two.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I don't think...
Welcome, Warden.
Morning.
Good morning. I want to say good luck in this new position. I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
We haven't voted on it yet.
I know. I just want to drag it out a little bit. I'm sure you'll do a good job.
Thank you.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Aye.
The next item I have is approve the hire of Erica Gould as our resource conservationist at the Conservation District at fifteen dollars per hour with benefits, effective nine twenty-two twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next item I have is approve the hire of Kelsey Logan as a custodian at twelve fifty per hour with benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next item I have is approve the hire of Denise Hoiles, deputy recorder of deeds at eleven seventy-five per hour with benefits.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
The next item I have is approve the hire of Paige Grant as a part-time on-call corrections officer at Tioga County prison at thirteen eighty-one per hour with no benefits.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
The next item I have is approve the promotion of Jordan Frost to full-time corrections officer at Tioga County prison at nineteen fifty-eight per hour with benefits, effective nine twenty-five twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
And next item I have is to approve the promotion of Madeline Wituski to a full-time corrections officer at Tioga County prison, nineteen fifty-eight per hour with benefits, effective ten nine twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up is to approve the twenty twenty-three holiday calendars for courthouse or county employees and an alternate version for nine-one-one dispatchers.
I'll make the motion to approve as presented, including the adjustment for the nine-one-one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up... Next up is to approve an increase to the current rates for poll workers. And that'll be effective with this coming up main election.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, I think our elections haven't become any easier. And we really cherish our, especially our older folks that have been doing this for a long time. And their training is getting more difficult. But we have to have training before every election. And I think they're very deserving of this increase. I want to keep them.
Can't have an election without them. Appreciate their work, period.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up, one county state tax refund.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is a three-year agreement with Government Software Services for data processing services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is a three-year agreement with Pentel Data for backup internet connection at the nine-one-one center.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Very critical. If you do not have your assurance for emergency services, we are in a bad place. So I appreciate the action on the motion.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is an agreement with First Light to run dark fiber between nine-one-one and the prison.
So moved.
Second.
I just have one question. How does First Light work with dark fiber? I thought that was pretty cool.
Turn the light on again.
Turn it to light. Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up is to approve the emergency hire for M.R. Dirt for roof wrap placement on Knox Road, Knox Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is an agreement with Urlich, who's going to provide extra pest control for Human Services where Highland chocolates is currently working.
Okay.
Bugs and chocolate.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
We don't like chocolate-covered bugs.
I don't. Well, it's encrusted. Next up is a proposal from Jesse Fisk, who will be providing and installing gutters and downspouts on the building next door, one of the six main street.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Act thirteen.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is a proposal from Eats Architects, who is going to kind of look at, you know, the renovations that need to be done for the Veterans Affairs Building.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, it's... Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to add that this will give us a feasibility study as well as schematic design. The VA has outgrown that facility, and they're looking at a nine hundred square foot addition. And this is just going to make sure that's feasible, and their program will fit in there, and what the costs are going to be.
It's... Yes, and basically to enhance services that are there, that we don't lose them because we can't maintain it. So it's an investment in our veterans. Is that appropriate?
I think the medical facility that is there is expanding, and we're bringing more of our veterans in all the time. That's the reason. So we have a very valuable asset there for the veterans in our county, not only our county, our ree... entire region that they're coming now, so...
Yeah, I think there's twelve hundred veterans served there.
Important to look at.
Act thirteen.
Yeah, Act thirteen. I would just add to this whole thing is I really appreciate the Bath VA and their willingness to listen to us and their willingness to be proactive on, hey, we can do this. We can... We need this added service. So any further discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next is a build and lease agreement with P.A. Wilds. They're going to lease some office space if they haven't been building up at Human Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
It's a great partnership.
Any further discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up is a lease agreement with the Chamber of Commerce for space next door at one fourteen Main Street. That's a ten-year lease.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Okay, aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up is to adopt Resolution R. sixteen twenty-two, appointment of a Tioga County Section 504 officer.
Section 504 officer. All entitlement grantees for community development block grant, CDBG, or home funds with more than fifteen employees are required to have a Section 504 officer. Be resolved on its eleventh day of October, twenty twenty-two. That Tioga County appoints Sean Sember to be such officer with the following responsibility. Compile and maintain a self-evaluation of the grantee's facilities, hiring practices, and citizen participation, as well as actively funded with the aforementioned grants to assure that there has been no discrimination in the providing of services based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion... How do you pronounce that? Familia? Femal? Femial? Familial? Status, age, or ancestry. Tioga County will develop and maintain a grievance procedure that must be adopted publicly in allowing for prompt local resolution of any complaints of discrimination based on disability. Existing grievance procedures can often be adapted to satisfy this requirement. Any individual or authorized representative who believes that they have been denied opportunities or treated differently due to their race, color, national origin, sex, disability, religion, familial status, age, or ancestry may file a complaint with the Section 504 officer. The officer must act on the complaint and maintain the records of the process for monitoring. Approved at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Tioga County Commissioners held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two. In the reading of that, I will make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
I've read it before. I'm glad you did. Good job.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved.
Next is to adopt Resolution R. seventeen twenty-two, and it's for the community.
Yeah, I see you put your glasses on, Commissioner.
Okay. Open your mouth there.
Is there an executive summary?
It actually says the chairman of the board of the county commissioners.
Yeah, so I can't read it.
Okay. So, "Resolution of the Board of Commissioners Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorized being submission of an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for funding through the Community Economic Development Block Grant Program as authorized under the Housing CDBG and further certifying compliance with requirements of said program. Whereas it is necessary and in a public interest that the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County, Pennsylvania, receive funds from the Commonwealth through the Department of CDBG in accordance with the CDBG block grant program. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County has the legal authority and the responsibility under Act one seventy-nine to apply the CDBG block grant fund. Whereas the Board of Commissioners have undertaken a considerable citizen participation process, including written invitation to municipalities, informational meetings, hearings, and legal notices, of all which accumulated in the prioritization of projects and development of the community block grant plan." Here's with shorter. "Whereas..."
Minus fingerprint, too.
"...the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County are familiar with the requirements of the programs provided for the Housing and Authority Development Act, HCDA, and the Community Development Block Grant Regulations. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County wishes to apply the said funds. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County that its chair is authorized to have prepared and necessary forms and documents to submit an application in the Department of Community Economic Development, CDBG block grant funds for the purposes of aforesaid. Be it further resolved that CDBG funds are determined by the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development to be expended on ineligible... or to be expended on ineligible programs' costs or do not meet a national objective. Board of Commissioners of Tioga County agrees to repay the portion deemed ineligible from non-federal sources." Okay. "Be it further resolved that the community development plan was developed in coordination with low and moderate individuals, interested organizations, nonprofits, and other interested parties through the citizen's participation process, and municipal information gathering is hereby adopted. Now therefore be it resolved that the chair of the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County is empowered to place his sign for signature on behalf of the governing body on necessary application form and affix hereto the official seal of the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Tioga County at the regular meeting on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two." I'll so move that. Long resolution.
Good job. Any discussion?
I need it.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up is Resolution R. eighteen twenty-two, which merely gives chairman's signature authority on the grant application to DCNR for the Pine Creek Trail extension site acquisition.
I'll move that resolution.
A second.
Discussion. All right, I'll just read the...
Last one.
Yeah, I'm not going to read the whole one. You want to read it?
I think Mark could probably explain this really quick.
Mark should read it.
His voice isn't good today.
Deb?
She could go and give you a snout.
I can explain it. So that is for the site acquisition grant from DCNR that we just received in about the last month. The special application for that is just that it has some federal money tied up in it. So that is a resolution to state the understanding that the Board of Commissioners is aware that there's federal money.
It's necessary to use those funds, basically.
Thank you. It was moved in second. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
And next is Resolution R. nineteen twenty-two, which is authorization to submit an application for RACP funding for one million dollars for the Marsh Creek Patterson Trail facility project.
Again, I'll make the motion, but I believe Deb, you've been working on that one.
So that is acceptance of the RACP grant that we received this fall.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Any discussion?
Amen.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
And next is Resolution R. twenty twenty-two, signature authority on a grant application to DCNR for the Pine Creek Trail extension.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional comments on that one?
So this is a new grant round that DCNR has opened up this fall, supplemental to their typical grant rounds. And we are looking for a resolution to submit an application for that.
And I want to appreciate what Deb and Mark are doing. We're coming to a very near place where we can seriously think about letting contracts and developing all the work that's been done over twenty-plus last four or five years. But I want to enunciate the participation of all the various departments, DCED, DEP, PENDOT, in a host of participation, not only from the standpoint of engaged in the meetings, but offering guidance on some of the applications that can be submitted, plus the legislative bodies that have been working with us. This is... This is... We're getting very close, and I want to thank you both for the work you do.
And I will echo that, and I will say that it's also made, I want to say, I don't want to say easier, but easier with the community participation, participation that we're seeing. So it's moving forward.
All of that will be with a return on investment, coming back to the community. It will happen.
All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Next up are the quarantine agreements for Human Services that are attached to the...
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved. And I was... Before we... We publicly comment, where is that, Janice? Will you read it to me? For information, per perdon section twenty-six fifty-seven C, effective October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, the Tioga County Board of Elections authorizes the director of elections to appoint poll workers as needed at county polling locations that have vacancies to serve during the twenty twenty-two primary election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Did I get that right then?
The general election.
The what?
The general election, November eighth.
Oh, oh, yeah. I'm just reading what...
I know.
General. Polling locations that have vacancies to serve during the twenty twenty-two general election on November eighth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Also, can I make public comment from this side? Do I have to go back there? Okay, all right. I'm going to make public comment. The first thing is, the Navy birthday is on the thirteenth of this month, two hundred and seventy-four years. So all you sailors out there, and I was one of them, happy birthday. Area Agency on Aging is sponsoring a veterans' recognition event at the Wellsboro Annex on ten twenty-five twenty twenty-two at eleven a.m. Need to make a reservation if you want to eat. How's that? I think they let you in regardless, but if you want to eat, because I'm going to be there. It's reserved by ten seventeen by calling five seven zero seven two three zero nine three five. The speaker will be Tim Cleveland, the Director of our Tioga County Veterans Affairs. The mess hall menu is going to be chicken bacon wrap, coleslaw, and cupcake for dessert. So veterans... With that, I will...
I like the mess hall.
You like the mess hall. I didn't come up with that, by the way. Area Agency Aging, on aging, does that every year. And it's usually well attended and a nice program. And with that, we'll move on with other public comment, please.
Can you guys elaborate on what the Act thirteen money is that's supposed to be for the two motions?
The Act thirteen money is the money the county receives and the municipalities receive annually. It's calculated by the state on the amount of drilling that's done, fracking is done in the county for the previous year.
Can you explain how those funds are supposed to be allocated, like for public works and stuff?
There are thirteen categories, and if you would like, we can get you the details of that. You're welcome. And by the way, that is on our website, every nickel that came in and every nickel that went out. So if you go to our website, you'll get where it's all been exp... where it's all been invested.
Thank you. I do have another question, actually. Right now, for veterans to... that are eligible for the hunting and fishing discount for their license is at sixty percent rating. Do you think it's appropriate that any honorably discharged veteran should be eligible for... especially based, you're on kind of the Academy of Things right now, that every honorably discharged veteran should be eligible for the discounted hunting and fishing license?
I don't know where you're going with that. What...
It's at sixty percent now as a minimum to be eligible for it.
Okay, are you saying it's too much or not enough, or...
As a treasurer.
No, but I wanted to get your question clear.
Do you agree that like every, every honorably discharged veteran should be eligible regardless of their disability rating?
Okay, then I would ask you, is that the case?
She's correct.
Okay.
Sixty percent to ninety-nine percent is two ninety-seven. It's a discounted rate. If it's a hundred percent, it's free. And if it's a hundred percent and totally permanent, it's free for a lifetime.
So, uh, do I personally... You're asking me personally, where this is coming from? Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have a comment on that?
I would agree.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm the treasurer, and we sell the licenses, yeah.
Thank you.
That's a state level thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting. The next meeting of the Tioga County Commissioners is scheduled from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And we will move into the salary board. Can I have the minutes? Oh, no, comments. Hearing none, the minutes of the September thirteenth meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
The item we have for salary board today is to approve an increase in hourly rate for Carrie Anne Moser from being approved for chief deputy register recorder's office to thirteen dollars per hour, effective ten ten twenty-two. And the annual stipend of a thousand dollars will continue.
Would you explain what the stipend is?
Each of the different row offices have like the stipend that's given annually. And Carrie Anne has been interim since Tina had... was previously the chief deputy. So she's currently receiving that for being interim, but this is just making her like the actual like chief deputy since Tina has resigned.
So that stipend is only for the chief deputy, correct?
Correct.
Did we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'd check.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
It's approved. Aye. I will adjourn and go into the retirement fund for comments. Hearing done, minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
Excepted to a per payment of two thousand one hundred twenty-six to corn ferries for September twenty-two extra. Write that motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye, it's approved.
And this is just for information of the board.
With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Warden, I have a question for you. Or it's not really important.